Good morning and welcome to the Argus Foundation Meet the Minds Zoom Candidate Forums for City Commission District 3. I am Christine Robinson, Executive Director of the Argus Foundation. Meet the Minds are meetings typically luncheons with guest speakers to talk about important issues impacting the community, state, and world. We hold these luncheons six times per year. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we must do this by Zoom today. This will be our third candidate forum for this political season, but not our last. I would like to welcome our candidates and express my appreciation at their participation in this forum. We have three candidates today who are all running for one seat. This city commission seat District 3 is currently held by Commissioner Shelley Freeland Eddy, who did not file to run for reelection, so it is an open seat. Present with us today are Erica Royo, Dan Clermont, and Robert Grant. Welcome to all of you. This is a nonpartisan election. The candidates are unable to tell you by law what, if any, political party they are registered with. These three candidates are running in a primary that occurs on Tuesday, August 18. The two candidates who receive the most votes will face off in the general election on Tuesday, November 3. I thought I would go over a few things before we get to the format of this forum. In 2018, there was a successful petition-initiated referendum to change the city charter. This moved the elections to coincide with the county, state, and federal elections. Prior to this, elections were held in March and May. This will be the first election after that referendum. The districted seats are up for election this year, districts 1, 2, and 3. You must live in the district to vote for the candidate. Today, our forum for candidates is for District 3 only. Last week, on Friday at noon, the ballot was officially set. No more candidates can get into this race. One of these three gentlemen will be your next city commissioner for District 3. I am told this is the first time all three candidates are in a forum together. We are very honored by that. And with that out of the way, oh, actually, I should show you a picture of what District 3 looks like, so that way everybody knows what we're talking about. This is the district map for the city of Sarasota. District 1 is located in the pink, District 2 is in the purple, and today's District 3 is located in the green right here. You see that it's bordered on the west by 301 in the city border, on the east, north is 17th Street, and south is Hyde Park Street. I will let you know that we are, the Argus Foundation is actually located in this district. So let's talk about how this forum is going to be conducted. This is a recorded forum that will be posted on our website, YouTube channel, and social media. This is the property of the Argus Foundation, and permission must be sought for the use of the video. The video should not be edited or altered from its original format. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening, which will be timed. We have a yellow warning card that we will show when there's 20 seconds remaining, followed by a red card when time is up. After the openings, candidates will be asked some questions in which they will get 90 seconds to answer. Again, they will get a 20-second warning. We will alternate who goes first, going backwards and forwards, so nobody will, everybody will follow everybody at one point in this forum. While it does make for great political theater to ask questions on the spot without warning, in reality, all of us want our elected officials to study issues before voting and make thoughtful votes. We want to encourage that, and so to that end, we have provided the candidates a list of possible questions we may be asking today. All the candidates were provided this list last week. We will be only asking questions from this list. After that, I will turn to some questions provided by Argus members, and one question we received from a member of the public that was given to the candidates yesterday, early afternoon. Candidates will be given 90 seconds to respond to those questions. After questions, each candidate will get a one-minute closing. "The Argus Foundation and our members pride ourselves in our tradition of civility, our deep conversations about issues, and a respect for each other, our guests, and our speakers. We are not interested in what candidates think of their opponent or what their opponent has done. We are interested in hearing about what the candidate will do and understanding more about each candidate. I want to thank each of the candidates for continuing on that tradition today." So let's begin. You each will get a two-minute opening to this forum, so let me get my timer ready real quick, since I am both moderator and timer at the same time. Eric, the order for the, you will be first. The order for the opening will be Eric, Dan, then Robert. Eric, you will have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and thank you for the Argus Foundation for having this forum. My name is Eric Arroyo. I came to Sarasota as a first-generation American citizen. I was raised by a single mom who brought me here, and when I graduated from high school, which I went to River View, right here, just down the road, I became the first to do so in my entire family. I met my wife in high school. She used to come by and sit with us at the lunch table and chit-chat, and she was a year younger. She's now a history teacher at Sarasota High School. I joke around that she remembers everything that has happened in the past. So I went to MCC, I went to the University of Florida, I went to Florida A&amp;M University where I got my law degree. I have a unique perspective and a set of skills, because over the years, I've negotiated contracts with the city attorney, I've represented clients before the city commission, and among others, zoning permitting, business issues, you name it. I'm running to give back to this community that has shaped me. I'm a judge at Tin Court and have been involved for 14 years. I manage private foundations and trusts that give half a million dollars to local charities every year. It helps reduce homelessness, feed starving families, provide guidance and scholarships for children, and many, many more. This community has shaped me into who I am, and it's our responsibility to ensure that the next generation gets the same opportunities. We do this by addressing homelessness, traffic conditions, and bringing some fiscal responsibility to the city commission. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Dan, you are next. You have two minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Christine, and thank you to Argus for holding this very important forum, and I'd also like to thank and congratulate Eric and Rob, my opponents here. It's not easy to step into the arena, and congratulations and best of luck to both of you. My wife, Yvette, and I moved to the area 10 years ago last week, and we love it here. We have five children who are all grown and moved out of the house and live all over the United States. We live on Hillview Street, right near Sarasota Memorial Hospital, east of the trail. People have asked why you've gotten involved in this, and the basic answer is I love the city. I love the people, and I, as Eric mentioned, I want to give back. I want people's lives to be better. I think we have critical issues to solve in the city. We have, first and foremost, I believe, is we have some environmental issues to address here in the city. A lot of us are here because of the environment, because of our environment, and we have a wastewater management system that we need to modernize and improve, and we've begun that process. And it's important as commissioners that we guide that forward and do it in a fiscally responsible manner. It's expensive, and it's long-range, and it needs to be done. Next is something I think is critically important as our economy faces a downturn. Our second-largest employer in Sarasota is the arts and cultural industry, and I believe that we have to address their needs, and we have to work with them. It's going to be a difficult time for the city and a difficult for them as well. But just as we re-nourish our beaches, we have to also nourish one of our largest employers and a backbone of our community. And lastly, what I'd like to mention as well is parks, green spaces, and neighborhoods. And what I've just done there is described our District 3. We don't have a big business district. When you come to our district, you're coming to live here, you're coming to visit Payne Park, Arlington Park, Bobby Jones, and I think it's very important to understand that that is a very, that is part of our identity in the city, and particularly so in our neighborhood. You lose those kind of things, you're payable for a green space, you lose it forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, you're up next.
Great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Rob Grant, and I also am from Sarasota, from Sarasota. I was born in Tampa. I graduated from Sarasota High School in 1990. I went off to college in Washington DC, went to American University, spent 10 years. The culmination of that experience for me was working as a writer for Dow Jones and learning about business, and that's where I cut my teeth on business, and actually, that's where, where this part of my, the path of this part of my life started. For the past 10 years, I've lived here in Sarasota. I've been back here since 2002. I live here with my wife in Arlington Park, and I work with a lot of nonprofits in town and businesses, providing accounting and business consulting services, and believe that I can help. I've been active in my neighborhood for the past more than a year, working on development issues, and I believe these are going to be some of the most important issues coming forward. But those aren't the only issues we have. I was late getting into the race, and I've been asked why. I've been very busy the past three months working with these nonprofits and small businesses to deal with the recent issues in our world, and I finally decided that this was the time that I needed to help the city the same way that I've been helping these businesses. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. So the order for the first question will be Dan, Robert, and then Eric. So the first question is this: What is your position on administrative review? Would you expand it or retract it? Dan, you're up first. You have 90 seconds.
Okay. What we're talking about is, we're talking about the review process for major projects that come before the city downtown. And what we do now, what we've done for nearly the last two decades, is an administrative review program where the people at the city who are trained to do so look over the project that's been proposed and apply it to the code and the zoning laws that we have downtown. And what we have is an alternative to go to a public review process, where there'd be public commentary, then an up-down vote by the city commission. The last two years, or the two decades, I believe what's happened in the downtown has made it a more vital and more interesting downtown. And when we look at that, and it does not mean, and that puts me in favor of the administrative review, but it doesn't mean everything's right down there. I've talked to plenty of people going door-to-door about problems, and I have some myself. Not everybody likes the buildings pushed right to the street. We have problems with side setbacks when we have current construction down there. It looks like it's going to swallow the building next door. I also would like to see more retail requirement on the first floor. But those kinds of things can be solved by dealing with the code. I think we can deal with changing this to a system where the city works with the community so that we make proper codes. We don't change the referees, we change the rules.
Okay. Robert, you're next.
Yes. So I think administrative review serves a purpose when it's used appropriately. I believe that it needs to be reviewed itself, and I think that there is some room to retract it to some degree. I think the public input is very important at all levels, and really on any issues. And there's too much of that. There can be too much of that, and it can get in the way of progress and growth. But I believe that there should be a process for public input, and I support that.
Eric, you're next.
Perfect. Well, we have to balance the scales and make sure that, one, the people are heard and are involved in the process, but also in making sure that government runs efficiently. So we have to balance these scales, and that, like both candidates that are my opponents have said, it starts with an overhaul of the code. I was a very big proponent of the very failed attempt at creating a form-based code, and I really liked the way they were going with making sure that administrative approval was for single-family homes and developments of less than 30,000 square feet, and that's, I'm in support of that.
Okay. So the order for our next question will be Robert, Eric, then Dan. Robert, you're up first. This is a specific question. Will you place the question of a strong mayor on the general election ballot? Why or why not?
No, I will not. It's very simple. Look, you look at the events that have gone on in just in this town in the past two years, Selby, Payne Park, Lido, these sorts of things, and it's allowed for a lot of public input. Can you imagine if we injected partisan politics into this? And if we're going to have a mayor, is that gonna then, are we going, is that going to become a part of our system here in Sarasota? And I can't even imagine what that would do to our community and the culture. It was tough enough just getting through Selby, Payne Park. A lot of longtime friends are now not friends, and I just, I don't feel like any of it was handled very well on any side, and I think everyone has learned a lot from that. I think the last thing we need is any more contentiousness downtown. We should be moving in the other direction towards collaboration and working together and talking to each other and finding some common ground. I don't think that having that kind of politics in City Hall is good for Sarasota.
Thank you. Eric, you're up next.
I am in favor of a strong mayor, because a strong mayor will be accountable to the people, and it would replace the unaccountable and unelected city manager position that we have now. In the past, we failed to pass it because we gave the mayor too much power, and we couldn't agree on how to move forward. But I think it's all about balance. The city commission is part-time. They make very little money, and they're rarely at City Hall. So we would need someone who represents the people, who'd be there full-time, and actually knows what's going on, the inner workings of the city. And I know some people are concerned about a boss mayor or someone who's going to just take over. We could start the strong mayor process with a two-year term, and I think that would resolve any of those concerns.
Dan, you're up next.
Thank you. You know, Sarasota is a city with a population of 58,000 people, but it's the heartbeat of an area that has a metro population of about 720. And we have big city problems here because of all the people who spend time here, and I think it's time to put to the voters the idea that maybe we need to have an executive, a full-time executive, as Eric said, who represents us down at the city, who's there full-time, addressing these critical issues. We have, as I mentioned, environmental issues, arts and cultural issues. We have issues with parks and public spaces. We need somebody who, well, put it this way, I think it should be given to the voter. We have had a vote in the past on these issues, but this was put forth at a different time. It wasn't put forth during a general election, and it was encumbered by other issues. I think we need to put it forth at a general election to give full voice to the voters. Do we change the city charter to allow for an executive mayor? So to answer your question, would I put it out there? Yes.
Thank you. So the next question will be, we're going to go back the other way. Robert, you're first, then Dan, then Eric. Robert, what is your review of the city manager today?
I've met Mr. Barwin a couple times. He came in and talked to us, Neighborhood Committee, while we were working with some staff members and city commissioners on some items. I like Tom Barwin. I think he's a nice guy. That said, we were not fully satisfied with the interaction that we had, but then I haven't, don't work with him on a daily basis. I think he does an okay job. I would say that, given the recent events with COVID-19 and protests and things like that have been happening, I think that he, along with some city commissioners, working with staff and police department, I think they've done an amazing job at handling this. And crisis sometimes is when you have to totally step up. I think there's room for improvement on a daily operating basis, and I think that that kind of thing can be handled on a review.
Okay. Dan, what is your review of the city manager?
Thank you. I don't know if Tom knows it or not, but in a way, he's on the ballot this fall as well. We have three new positions that we're going to be, well, that are open for vote this fall. If we have three new commissioners, that's a comment by the city saying that they're not that happy with the way things are going, and he may have to answer some questions if we have full-fledged turnover. It'll get feather in his cap if things remain as they are. Of course, it can't remain as they are in District 3. But there's another way to look at it. For the past year, I've talked to just about everybody I can, and the question of Tom and his performance has come up. I've talked to people in the business community, the environmental community, the arts community, the neighborhood community, and generally, the reviews I've gotten are not my reviews. They're theirs, and they're not that good. So you have to factor that in. These are the people who deal with him in the city on a regular basis. So when we look at the elections to come up, and we look at the reviews of the people who dealt with him, I think, you know, there may be questions about that position.
Okay. Eric, you're up. What is your review of the city manager?
Oh, I've met Tom Barwin. He's a very, very nice gentleman, but he's like any other full-time bureaucrat in any other municipality dealing with a part-time commission who has limited understanding of legal principles and how the city is functioning on a practical scale. And he takes authority, as he does, and impacts policy. And I think a strong mayor would change that, because we would have someone who is elected and accountable to the people. I do like some things that Tom Barwin has done. He hires extremely well. He is heads of departments, but, you know, on the other hand, I think he hires way too much, or departments are growing way too quickly. So that's my review. I think he impacts policy maybe a little bit too much.
Okay. You all are going very fast. I don't hold these up, the warning cards up very little, so we're getting through a lot of issues, so thank you for that. So the order for the next question will be Dan, Eric, then Robert. Dan, so you're up first. How do you view the city's relationship with the business community? Do you believe there is good communication? What would you think can be done, what do you think can be done to further the relationship?
Yeah, I think it needs some work. You know, you can pick the low-hanging fruit, and that is a recent issue, and that is Lido Beach. The city commission was really late to the party on opening the beach there and left St. Armin Circle twisting in the wind. Some of the businesses there have closed, and so that relationship there wasn't strong. And if you want to talk about the city communication and city relationship with businesses, let's talk about parking meters. I don't think there's a business anywhere or anybody goes downtown happy about the parking meter situation. It was a unilateral call, and nobody's very happy about it that I've spoken with. And something else I think that I'd like to talk about is the building department. You know, I've talked to a number of builders. Now, I'm not talking about big developers. I'm talking about the local people who build our homes and our businesses, okay? And the veins are popping out of their necks when they talk about dealing with the building department here. It's not a customer service type of experience. And now they deal with a lot of municipalities, and they seem to struggle particularly with Sarasota. And somebody might say, well, okay, it's a builder, so what? But, you know, those are our builders. Those are our projects. And so that we, as an individual possibly that goes ahead and has to have a home built or a business built, you find you're getting your project pushed back, and the project becomes more expensive. I would like to see us work with the community more with a customer service type of orientation. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, your question.
My answer is, the city and the business community are like oil and water, because they think in completely different terms. Municipal employees get paid the same amount for doing good or a bad job, and they have no real understanding of the commercial world out there. So the best way for the city to really deal with the business community is to get out of the way efficiently, because a lot of these, for example, we, this building that I'm in now downtown is owned by an LLC. We have an LLC. We can't hire a general contractor, we can't hire a plumber. We have to hire a general contractor to hire a plumber, and there's so many of, we have to cut some of that red tape, because ultimately, when we add a layer of, add an unnecessary layer oftentimes of government, it ends up being an increase in taxes or costs to the consumer and taxpayer.
Okay. Robert, your question.
Obviously, it's a strained relationship, and I know that because I talk to business owners all the time in their offices, dealing with their business. I hear the struggles that they have. I hear their complaints. But I think that it goes both ways. City government's got some work to do, no doubt. Planning Department, Parks and Recreation, there's some areas there. But at the same time, I feel like the business community needs to understand that it is not necessarily the core of everything that happens in our city, and that the people matter too, and that they need to be listened to and considered. I think the city could, I think it's up to the commissioners a little, set better policies, set a better direction to the city manager, to create a better relationship between the two. I would certainly work towards that.
Okay, great. So the next question is another relationship question. The order for this will be Eric, Robert, and then Dan. How do you view the city's relationship with the county and other governments? If you believe there is a problem, what do you think it is, and how would you improve it? Eric, your question.
My answer, in the same way I answered my last question. It's oil and water. They get paid vastly different amounts. They have different party affiliations. They have different work schedules, different experience. I mean, you're talking about a full-time county commissioner who makes $80,000 a year, as opposed to a city commissioner who's part-time, maybe goes into the office occasionally, makes twenty-some thousand dollars a year. It just creates a different mentality. So we improve it by finding common ground. If you want to build a relationship with the county, you elect fiscally conservative candidates in the city.
Robert, your question.
Yes. Same thing. Strange. I mean, we read it in the news every day. Some of us experience it in our lives every day, going from city to county and the difference in infrastructure and the way things are handled. But I don't think that, as with most things, there's, you cannot find fault or blame on anyone's side. I watch what goes on in the county. I'm not happy with that sometimes. The commission, I'm not happy with that. No one has stepped up and really extended a hand in collaboration. Like, what I feel would be an honest hand, and you have to sit down, and you have to talk, and you got to give a little. And I feel like that's, partisan politics would make that even more difficult here in town. And, I mean, do we want what goes on in the county to happen here in the city? And just because it happens in the county, do we need to have it here in the city to make sure that all of this is fluid across the two municipalities? I don't think so.
Dan.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, it is strange. I'll agree with the other two on that. And, you know, we, as, we, making an assumption, being on the city commission, meet every other week, and, you know, we have to look a little bit at the city manager as well. He's there every day dealing with issues with the county, and some of the investigation as to how things aren't working out with the county might start there. But the city commission, I think, though, getting back to us, I think we have to look at the fact that the electorate in the city is also part of the electorate that elects the county commissioners, the school board, and those who represent us in Tallahassee. And we have to have respect for the people that they've helped to elect, and it always comes, when you have issues in any relationship, it comes down to respect and communication, and we need that. We need to work together more regularly on more of a scheduled basis. We have had good relationships between the police department here and the sheriff's department. That seems to work well. We can move forward with projects. We've got the Bobby Jones Park, which has probably come up here, and they have a park adjacent to it. Maybe the city and the county can work on a project like that together. I think those are important things, and when, like, I'll just reiterate, it comes down to communication. That's where the problems are solved, between us and other governmental agencies.
Great. Thank you. So the next question will be Eric, Dan, and then Robert. So Eric, you'll be up first. How is the city doing in dealing with the homelessness issue? What specific things would you do to improve the situation?
Thank you for asking this question, because that's one of the main points of my campaign. Homelessness is probably my number-one priority. If you were homeless right now in Sarasota, you were, ask how you get on the continuum of care. They tell you to go to the Social Security Office on B Ridge in Tamiami, to go to Honor A and B Ridge for the VA hospital, the VA hospital, to go to the DMV. You have to walk about 27 miles just to get the services that you need. We don't make it easy for people to get out of homelessness. The trend showed that the homeless population was decreasing, but that's since changed. We have about 1,000, or just over 1,000 homeless people in the county. We have a third of that in the city, which has a tenth of the population. We're a funnel for the services, because of the services, and because of the tourism. If I were to get elected, I would make getting the homeless population to the continuum of care or permanent supportive housing, make that the number-one priority. That would involve a public awareness campaign to provide remote services via provider dispatch or virtually, reducing the occurrence of crime in the downtown area, and a court diversion program, not unlike how Tin Court acts. This is what cities like Clearwater have done, and they've reduced homelessness by over 98%.
Thank you. Dan, your question.
Thank you. An important issue and a difficult one to solve in the city. I think we all agree that it's a humanitarian problem. It's a drug and alcohol problem, mental health issues, people who many times just don't have good options or family support. I think the city I think the, the city has done a good job of outreach. I, I, I did a ride-along with the hot team. I rode with an officer and a trained counselor. And an important thing that we need to do is make contact with the people. And so that there is some sort of communication, we know where they are, what their struggles are, and inform them of the, of the help they can get, the options they have, the services that they can get to. And also to enforce the law. But this is where we run into a bit of a problem. Because when we force the law and somebody's arrested for something that's nonviolent, they end up downtown. They end up in jail for ten, twelve days before they end up in front of a judge. An attorney's involved. Next thing you know, they're back out on the street and the recidivism happens. They come back. It's not an efficient way, uh, to deal with this. We can't arrest our way out of this problem. And what I would like to see is when somebody gets to jail, that there is somebody there who can deal with this nonviolent offender. And before they have a very expensive jail, stay with jail, they can speak with them, make contact and see, can we help this person? Can they go to Harvest House? Get into the vector program? Is there something that, or the Viper program, I'm sorry, that where we can help to actually solve this problem more cost efficiently? And isn't that always a good answer?
Hey, Robert, you're up.
Yes. So the first thing that I would do is I support the city's, um, decision to hire, we refer to, I think, as an affordable housing czar. Um, and I believe it needs to be funded because I think that is a huge part of this, the cost of housing. And we have all the other social issues that lead to the homelessness that we see on the streets downtown every day. But there are regular folks that end up this way because they lost a job and they just can't afford their house where they've always been able to afford it. Not because they did anything wrong, not because they've got a mental health problem or a drug problem or anything like that. Not because they just want to be homeless. So that's the first thing I would do, is make sure to support that. And from there, I believe that we do need more programs that people can access downtown. Or the sheriff is looking at, uh, expanding, uh, the jail downtown and adding a building where there's going to be an expanded transition program. I think that's a great place for it. I think it should be there. I think it should accessible to downtown. And it's moves the people who want to get out of the type of life that they're in and to better themselves. It moves them away from that, gives them an opportunity to do so.
Okay. We're going to move to a question on COVID-19. The order for this answer will be Dan, Robert, then Eric. Uh, Dan, how do you think the city did on responding to COVID-19? What specific things would you have done differently? What will you do once elected to help us recover?
Right. Great question. It's on everybody's mind all the time. And, uh, you know, this was a two-pronged issue. It was a health crisis. It is also an economic crisis. The city was, uh, the, the whole world had this put upon it and weren't really prepared for anything like this. And as far as the city was concerned, many of the things that were, uh, that, that happened were put upon it. Uh, the CDC had requirements. Uh, the governor shut the businesses down and, uh, and, and had a stay-at-home order. Uh, better safe-at-home order. And beyond that, the city did outreach to the, to the, to the hospital, trying to work out what we could have extra hospital beds and so on. Going forward, we have to make sure that we have proper testing, uh, opportunities out there. We're doing that. But we need to be on the, on the cutting edge of that because we need that data. We need to know where we stand. Uh, on the economic side, maybe not so good. I mean, there was the beach issue again. Uh, you know, we were late to the party on opening up the beach. Uh, you know, and now we sit here in the city with a fourteen percent, uh, unemployment number. And what that creates is, uh, this circle where people lose their job, they lose their insurance, it's back to a health and, uh, financial crisis for those folks. And, uh, you know, those are very difficult things. And, but what I like to see, you know, is we are open now. And as Americans, we have a right to make decisions for ourselves. But with those rights come the responsibility. We have to consider our own health conditions, and those are the people we are exposed to when we decide to enter into a building or engage in an activity. And wear a mask. You're not wearing it for you. You're wearing it for others. Thank you.
Robert, that's your question.
Sure. As I said earlier, I think overall, I think the city did a pretty good job. Nobody expected this. Nobody's ever experienced this. I think they did a great job communicating. And I think really what I would do moving forward, the most important, I mean, number one, we're not through this yet. We're still in the middle of this. So I don't want to, want to jump the gun too quick and judge the overall response. I think the important thing is to start right now on putting together an after-action plan and, and looking back immediately to what we've already done, evaluating it and, and putting these plans into writing and, and making a manual so that everybody knows moving forward, this happens again. We end up with a surge next year. We end up with a second wave. Ten years from now, we end up with something totally different. We have a plan now. Nobody's ever put that in place, certainly not here in Sarasota. And I think that we, now that we know how it's going, how this could progress, we can plan better. That's where I would start.
Eric, your question.
I think it goes back to, to our relationship with the county. I mean, when the, when all the beaches were being opened, Sarasota decided to be different and keep them closed. Uh, and even though all the municipalities surrounding us had already opened. So I wouldn't have kept Lido Beach closed when the county opened there. Uh, I also would have told the, the people, at least put signs up that, that parking wasn't being enforced. Because people, in a time when they're not working, are still with the city. I, I'm curious to see how much the city collected during that time. One thing I would have also done was allow some businesses to, to, to thrive during this time by maybe allowing them to sell some food or, or easing up some of these restrictions that were, that were still, uh, in effect for the, for the businesses. I, I don't like how we responded to COVID-19. We shut down City Hall for three months. And we've gone to virtual meetings and it does not feel like it's enough. We've done some great things like providing some aid to local businesses, but I don't think it's enough.
So the order for the next question will be Robert, Eric, then Dan. What is your position on how the city is budgeting? We are officially in a recession. Do you believe that the city has adequately prepared for the dip in revenues? How would you prioritize the budget if you have to cut? Robert, you're up first.
Um, actually, I don't think we have planned well enough. We can see the increase in, in the size of the city government, and I do believe it's a problem. I think, I know that there's an annual budgeting process for this. But I think that we need to take a serious look at the structure of our city government and the way it's put together and the way it functions. It starts at the top with Tom Barwin, and that is where I would start. And like the answers I would hear, we'd have to, you know, continue the discussions and continue to do research until we come up with some answers. I spent a lot of time working on budgets, working through the budget process in my professional life. And, um, it's not always easy. It's tedious, but it takes, but it can be done, especially with a lot of collaboration. Everybody brings something different to the table. He's going to see something that we didn't, that I didn't see. So, um, I, that's how I would proceed with it. I would work very closely with Tom Barwin, start, and, uh, city's finance director.
Eric, your question.
So our current budget is two hundred and fifty-four million, which is up twenty-five percent in three years. They've been spending and expanding the staff of the city twenty-five percent in the last five years. We had two hundred, five hundred employees, uh, like three years ago, and now we have over seven hundred. With very few improved services, in my opinion. Pension is going to be a challenge in the future, a hundred and eighty million in unfunded liabilities. This year, there's a shortfall in sales taxes and penny sales taxes. That'll be in excess of five million. That, that's going to be a shortfall from the general fund, which is around seventy-five million right now. The only way to balance it is to not spend fund balances or reserves, um, but to make meaningful cuts. A hiring moratorium and the total review of the, the CIP, the capital improvement projects. In terms of priorities, I, I don't know why in the middle of COVID, we're still moving forward with, with, uh, with, uh, renovating Bobby Jones. I would turn it into a park. I would turn Bobby Jones into, into a, hand it over to the Conservation Foundation, turn part of it into a, and lease the, the British Donald Ross Golf Course out, uh, for a dollar a year, which would save us about one point seven million dollars. Let a professional run that golf course, uh, with, with, of course, with the understanding that they would maintain reasonable prices. Six percent cut in all department budget, budgets except for the police. Will save about two and a half to three million dollars a year, which will bring our short deficit to manageable levels. Thank you.
Dan, your question.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, we've had a ten-year economic expansion or thereabout, and it's easy to make your budget look good then, and it does look good. We've got about thirty percent of our general fund and reserve. Our, uh, bond rating has improved recently. Uh, but now we're heading into an unexpected, uh, recession. And, uh, you know, now that the water's receding, you see the rocks, and it's not necessarily the best situation. We might be looking at about a ten-million-dollar shortfall next year, possibly the year after. And we need to make serious cuts. We need to take, uh, major projects and possibly push them off. But what I would say is, um, we all, uh, were shocked by, uh, hearing that we were going to have a sudden economic crisis in our lives. And we all sat back and said, well, is the mortgage covered? Is the car payment covered? Is the rent covered? Are utilities covered? All of a sudden, that new flat-screen TV just kind of wasn't so important, and neither was that trip. I thought you could even take one right now. But the city needs to do the same thing. And to me, that prioritizing starts with, well, we have to make our bond payments. And I don't want to see any reduction in our public safety. That's important to us. Utilities have to run right. When you flush the toilet, you want it to flush. I want to see our environmental infrastructure projects move forward, and we all want to see good streets and parks. But eventually you run into these ancillary issues, and we have to address those in the area of cuts. And I think we all recognize about seventy-five percent of the city budget is people. And it's not just cutting government jobs, it's people. I run a business, had to let people go. It's difficult. But this is a job that requires difficult decisions, and I'm willing to make them, and it's necessary. Thank you.
Okay. So the order for this one will be Robert, Dan, then Eric. What do you think of the city's recent proposed transportation plan called Sarasota in Motion? Do you agree or disagree with it? Robert, you're up first.
Well, I had a lot of high hopes. I would say that. Um, I agree with the spirit of it. Uh, I lived in Washington DC for ten years. Most of them, I did not own a car, so I can appreciate urban and city living. Riding a bicycle. I'm an avid bicyclist. That said, I do not feel safe bicycling in this town. So, um, I spent a lot of time with it. It was part of the issues that we looked at in our neighborhood. And the biggest problem that I find with it is I think it's disconnected from the rest of the county. If, if the transportation plan that we put in place here in the core does not link up and allow people to get here in, in, in an efficient and easy fashion that they enjoy, then what we have here in the city is not going to really be very helpful. It'll be an island. And so, uh, it needs some review. This is going to be particularly challenging now. They're trying to launch this and fund this now with the, the other challenges that we face. Those are going to be some tough decisions. I like the idea of increasing cycling, reducing cars, but cars, unfortunately, I've lived in Florida most of my life, and cars are a part of our culture, and we just have to find a way to manage them well.
Dan, you're up.
Thank you. You know, this is one of the most difficult problems to solve in Sarasota. You know, we have a unique situation. We have a confluence of major north, south, and east-west traffic all coming together in a grid system downtown that was designed for the horse and buggy. And really, we had the city commission sending, uh, requested city staff to come up with something, uh, come up with unique answers. And once more, uh, we're dealing with a consultant. And, uh, you know, I, that's fine to use a consultant. But then, months later, they come back with Sarasota in Motion. Everybody sees it. And many people say, well, it's not used to what I'm seeing. I'm not used to seeing this kind of thing, so I reject it. Before that, I, I would say, before we throw another consultant report into the dustbin that we have in the back in Sarasota, consultant reports, I'd say we need to take a closer look at it, and we need to see, can it work? They are engineers, they are professionals, and at least, I, we hope they've had the proper training and have the proper perspective. But, you know, there are some nice soft changes. We all like to see bike trails. I've seen the imagery of people walking down the street. And, you know, it's very European. It's very nice. But bottom line, we have cars. So will it move the traffic? With the roundabouts and the road diet, will it move the traffic? Bottom line, when we go to those engineers and they can show us all of their computer images, does it move the traffic? Because if it doesn't, it doesn't work. If it does, I'm with you.
Okay. Eric, your question.
We spent nearly five hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars, for another report. The city loves getting reports. The, to implement it, it'll be a hundred and twenty million dollars of money that we don't have. It's, it's, it's a great example of how we waste money. Let's look at the over two million dollars we've recently spent on, on studies. The viability of a water study, the Marion Anderson site, the Bobby Jones. Tell us that we need to put more money in Bobby Jones, the, the, the bouquet of city water, the taxi services, the odor study. It's, it's never-ending, and these are just examples of expensive reports that the city does that are just collecting, collecting dust on a shelf somewhere.
So the order for the next question will be Dan, Eric, then Robert. Uh, what is your position on the direction the city is taking on Bobby Jones? What would you do with Bobby Jones Golf Course? Dan?
Well, I'm hoping that in four years, when one of us is running for reelection, this is not a question. We've been kicking this can around for a long time, and we continue to do so. You know, when you talk to the people that live in, in the vicinity around the golf course, they want to see it remain public. And I, public land, regardless of what we do, it must remain public land. That is a basic answer. I think we can, many of us can agree on that. But as we move forward, what do we do with it? I love the idea of the park, and the people there love the idea of the park. Uh, there's not a good walkable park in that immediate area. And I, beyond the aesthetics and, and, and having a park, is I love the watershed idea. Properly treating water that comes from points beyond all the way up to Lakewood Branch as it heads into the bay. I think that's a responsibility we have, and I like that. Uh, I'm not as certain about going with the conservation easement because it's a hundred years long. And it ties future commissioners or leaders of the city's hands as to the use of that land. We don't know what it's going to be in twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five years from now. I, I, I have some caution about that. The other issue is how to pay for it, and we haven't really addressed that. It's a very expensive thing. City doesn't have the money. It's probably going to have to get kicked down the road again because of the issues with, uh, the economic downturn coming. But before we turn any dirt there, we have to determine, is it going to be a bond issuing? What is it going to be? Let's talk about that. We all want the park. How are we paying for it?
Okay. Eric, you're next.
So my backyard is directly connected to Bobby Jones. I, I, I completely agree. We should, we have to keep Bobby Jones as public space. But the city's still spending over a million dollars with Richard Mandel right now to design a course that we can't afford, don't need, and we run very badly, and we have been for years, doing the same thing over and over again. It's insanity, as we all know. And when, how are you going to expect a different result? I've already said my position. It is convert, have one golf course that is, that we lease out to a professional for a dollar a year, saving us almost over a million dollars every single year, and turn the, the rest of it into a, a park through the Conservation Foundation. That's my position.
Hey, Robert, your question.
Sure. Um, I do believe the Conservation Foundation should have a role in this. Their, their primary role would be to help set the standards and then ensure that we're meeting the standards. So I too have talked to some folks up there that live around there. And, um, I think that generally what I found is that they like it being a park. A lot of folks like having golf. City has made a decision, um, and I think that's a part of it. And I think that they should move forward with that decision. If, if, given the events, we decide that it is not economically feasible to maintain golf there. And I think that it is important to go back to the community and ask them then how they're going to continue to celebrate the legacy that golf represents there at the golf course. That's important, if it's going to be taken away. But, um, I think the city has approved a plan. I think it's important to move forward with it. There might need to be some tweaks to it, given the economics. But I support the plan that they have right now.
So that's the initial ten questions that I submitted to you last week. So now we're going to move on to, uh, other questions that you all received yesterday. Uh, the first question I have for you actually didn't come from an Argus member. It came from a member of the arts community. And I thought it was, uh, an interesting question, uh, to put out there. Normally, we don't do that. But, um, I thought it was a, a, an interesting perspective, uh, to have you all comment on. The city commission has made some controversial decisions on issues affecting the art and culture organizations in Sarasota in recent years. How would you frame your views of arts organizations, especially when they come up against groups that argue against certain projects under the auspices of protecting neighborhoods? Eric, you're going to be up first. It'll be Eric, Robert, then Dan. Eric.
I, I think we should definitely support the arts. For example, I'm in support of keeping, uh, of keeping the, the statue downtown, the unconditional surrender. I, I think we do a very, very-
I think we do a very, very unsatisfactory job of keeping our arts community, making them feel appreciated. Because of that, I feel that, I mean, some of our charities like Mot Marine are leaving, you know, they left the city. Then you look at Selby Gardens, they're trying to leave the city. You look at, you look at the Players Theater. You look at all these, it sort of feels like the city is driving away a lot of the arts. Another example would be, would be the orchestra. I think the city would do very well to to foster a better relationship with the arts community in order to keep them here in the city.
Robert, you're next.
Sure. So I am a working member of the arts community here in Sarasota. Finance manager for a nonprofit arts organization here. And I think it's unfortunate, some of the events that we've seen recently regarding our arts organizations. They are an important part, and I wholly support them. But that said, they're a part of the community. And I think it's important that they that they also are upstanding members of the community. And the organization that I work for, we are, and I believe we are. I think that again, like with anything else, it's about communication, and it's about respect and mutual respect. And you know, they need to respect the community. They have their own wishes, desires. They've got their own goals. There's going to be disagreements. The way they've been handling that is unfortunate. And I think that we can all do better going forward, and that's part of my goal with this. It's always a work. It's always a process, and there's going to be active collaboration, and that's what I'm going to focus on.
So this will be the last question before closing. How do you feel our police department is?
I think you forgot Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I was jumping the gun. Go ahead.
That's okay. Yeah, T-shirt wars. That's what we've been having. These things drive the community apart. You know, we all live in neighborhoods and we respect our neighborhoods. Those are very, very important issues. I've had issues behind my own house in the past, and I understand that. On the other hand, the arts and culture community is the second largest employer, is a backbone here. It's not somebody that we can set aside and say, well, they can take care of themselves. I've had the unique experience of living in Green Bay, Wisconsin, and Sarasota, Florida, two cities under $100,000, that everybody in the country knows those cities. Obviously, the Green Bay Packers are the reason here. Why is it? It's not the beach. There's lots of beaches. It's because of our cultural connection here, the arts. That's what makes us special. And it's part of our identity. It's part of our lifestyle. We may not all attend, but it does drive our community. So I think we do need to make them feel special. And when there is a issue that comes between them and the neighborhoods, the city needs to get involved because what happens is it devolves into a personal battle. We're talking about neighborhoods of our taxpayers versus a absolutely vital organization or group of organizations in the arts and cultural world. The city needs to be involved in this and not let it become the, as I say, T-shirt battle and the personal battle, signs in the streets and all of this. We should be working together to make these things work. It's vital to our community, and the city needs to help make it happen.
My apologies again, Dan. So let's go into the last question now. How do you feel our police department is doing? What can be done to improve morale? What can be done to help relations between the police department and the community? The order for this will be Eric, Dan, then Robert. Eric, you're up first.
I'm going to keep it very short. We should not, I repeat, we should not fund the police department. We provide training. We have one of the best police departments in the entire country. So we provide training. We definitely, you know, get rid of bad employees. We, you know, look at opportunities and provide more training. We do not defund.
Dan?
Dan, okay. Yeah, well, thank you again. And the first thing I would say is I feel safe in my city. I think that's the ultimate review, positive review for your public safety department, which is the police. I feel safe in my city. Now, there was a bad cop in Minneapolis, and we all know of the racial issues that have come about because of that. And when we talk about morale issues, I, you know, I can understand. You're a police officer. We all run from gunshots. They run toward gunshots. That's their job. And then you're told suddenly you are lesser now because of the bad reflection of poorly-trained officers or people who just have racist views. That's absolutely wrong. And all of us can agree that what happened in Minneapolis was egregious. But this isn't Minneapolis. This is Sarasota. I've taken a tour with Pat Robinson, the assistant, or I should say, the deputy police chief. And we have a terrific management team. The officers I've met have been professional. And I think that we have to be supportive of our police department. The community has to provide them the proper tools. We have to have the training. We do offer police review board, and we have to have a multiracial group of people that are involved there. We need to hear their voice. We need to know what their experience is. I know mine. Theirs may be different. And that's important for us to do because we do have a minority population here. I know there are a lot of Hispanics. I would like to see more bilingual officers on the force, and I know that they're making efforts to make that happen. But I am with the police. I think they do a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Robert?
Great, thank you. Well, as the son of Hillsborough County, as a retired Hillsborough County Sheriff's deputy, I can tell you that I fully support our police department and always will. That said, not all people do. We obviously need some reforms, given the things that have gone on in the world. And I would encourage those. I would support them. I think the most important thing, though, is it occurs at hiring. I think that we need a very stringent hiring process and high standards. And I think if you start there, then problems down the road are less likely to happen. I know there was a discussion last night at city commission regarding body cameras, at least body cameras. I think it's a good idea. I support it. Funding is definitely going to be an issue. I hope that that comes up this year when they get into the budget workshops. I, my understanding with some folks attorneys around town is that sometimes there is a morale problem with the police department. And I can imagine some police, I mean, look at what happened in Hallandale yesterday, SWAT team, and people resigned. So morale is going to become even more of an issue. And so I plan on speaking with Chief DePino, and I'm familiar with her from Ocean City, Maryland. I was happy to see her come down here when she did. And finding out what we as a city can do to support the police department and their morale as we also make reforms to address citizens' concerns about fairness and respect.
So now we're going to get to our closing. The order for the closing will be Robert, Dan, then Eric. You will each get one minute. You'll get a 20-second warning as you have been in the questions. So it's a one-minute closing. Robert, you're first.
Great. First of all, thank you, Christine and everyone at the Argus Foundation for allowing us all to participate here. This is, I can't speak for anybody else, but I know this is why I'm doing this, is to get out there, talk to folks, hear the views, find out what's going on in our community, and hopefully we can work together and make it, make it better. I believe that I offer a very unique skill set and a wide breadth of world knowledge. And I believe that makes me very qualified for a position that necessitates a worldview and the ability to stand at 10,000 feet and then get down and look at it, you know, right at every foot. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Gentlemen and Christine.
Thank you, Robert. Dan, your one-minute closing.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. This has been terrific. I want to reiterate three of the things I think are very important to the city, and that is our environmental infrastructure issues, dealing with the arts and cultural needs that are out there, and it is also making sure we're attending to our parks, public spaces, and neighborhoods. You know, 2020 has been a remarkable year, and we all think, of course, about the virus, and we think about the racial strike we've had. But to me, it will also be the point in my life when I finally stepped into the public, and I've absolutely enjoyed it. I've met incredible talent in this city, wonderful neighbors, and it's been reaffirming. When we have a very divided community, or I shouldn't say community, but a very divided country. But when I go door-to-door, I find wonderful people who are interested in issues and want to talk. It's been very reaffirming to me, and I really love the process so far. Thanks again.
Thank you, Dan. Eric, your closing.
Oh, thank you to the Argus Foundation and to you, Christine, for having us here. I, like I said in my opening, you know, I grew up in Sarasota. It's molded me. I intend to raise a family here, and I work here. And I have a unique perspective when it comes to the city because of my involvement with the city commission in the past. So again, our priority should be to keep Bobby Jones as public space, but to manage it intelligently, to get our fiscal house in order, to address homelessness, to address traffic problems, to address affordable housing, and to address public safety so that we grow, we grow intelligently. Because right now, I feel that the city's growing way too quickly because, because these concerns are not being addressed, and we're not, we're not being forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank each of our candidates for their attendance here today and their willingness to serve. The campaign trail is not an easy one, especially today. We hope you enjoyed this candidate forum. Please stay tuned for our Monday local government updates on our social media and check out our website at argusfoundation.org. Thank you again to our candidates and be well.
Thank you.